You may be seated. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose? Okay, I entertain a motion to, well, to approve, um, I mean, the consent agenda. Those in favor, say aye. Those who oppose? Okay. Now, we are going to go into, um...
Did you do the agenda first?
You know what? I did, I did the consent agenda first. We did consent agenda, but I, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. All right, now, we're going to move on to consider approval of ordinance zero five dash twenty-four, amend the zoning map.
Those under consent?
Oh, wait a minute.
Got a couple of call.
Oh, yeah. That's right. All right, next, we're going to go into public comment. We're going to have Mr. Roy Jones with Electric Cities.
Thank you, ma'am. It's good evening. Hey, there is a presentation that has been passed out through the group. Thought I would just use it to kind of walk us through, uh, the Eastern Agency Power Supply issues that are going on. Uh, so, moving on to page number two. First of all, just a little bit of background. Uh, you, several of you here were on the board, uh, back in 2015 when we sold our generation assets. Uh, and when we sold those assets, uh, we entered into two different contracts. And I know sometimes there might be some confusion about these contracts, and so I will kind of make sure everybody understands the baseline here. But there were two contracts that we entered into. We sold Generation Assets to Duke Energy Progress. We entered into a contract to buy all the power from Duke at wholesale, and it's a cost-based contract, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And we entered into a term of twenty years. Now, what was important about that twenty years was when Duke acquired our Generation Assets, they amortized the Generation Assets over a twenty-year period, and they wanted to make sure that the thirty-two communities paid for their share of the, uh, the purchase price of those assets, because there was a premium paid for those assets. So that was the first contract that was entered into. It's called a full requirements purchase power agreement. The acronym is FRPDA. So that was the first contract. When we sold the Generation Assets, we did not get enough money from the sale proceeds to pay off all the debt. So we had the issue of taxable debt. It was about four hundred and thirty million dollars worth of taxable debt that we had to issue. And we amortized that debt over ten years. So, the assets were sold in 2015. The debt was amortized over ten years. So, next year, on July of 2025, the last debt payment's going to be made. And we will not have any more debt payments to make. But we still have to buy power from Duke for ten more years, at a minimum, through 2035. Okay? So, two contracts that are going on. Now, moving on to the next slide. This is the important part of this contract. So, when Duke enters into contract with wholesale customers, they are cost-based. That means whatever it takes Duke to build the facilities, earn a return on it, they're their actual cost. So it's the capital that they spend as well as the fuel. So it's a cost-based contract. The thirty-two communities in Eastern Agency are under that contract. The cooperatives, and there are fourteen of them that buy wholesale power from Duke, are under the same cost-based contract. And Fayetteville, North Carolina, is under that same contract. So we've got those entities in Eastern North Carolina that are buying wholesale power from Duke under a cost-based contract. Now, in December, they give us an estimate of what they're going to bill us on for the next year. So, come December first, they're going to give us an estimate, and all of 2025, they're going to bill us on that estimated cost. When 2025 closes out, they'll close out their books, and about the middle of 2026, using 2025 as an example, that's when they'll come out and say, okay, this was our actual cost. This is what we estimated that we're going to be in building on, so there's a difference there. There's always been a difference. Either they owe us money as a wholesale customer, or we owe them money. For years, these, these true-ups, we call them, have been very small. But starting in 2022 and 2023, the true-ups were large, very large, millions of dollars of large, spread across the thirty-two communities. So, I'll talk a little bit about why those, those true-ups have been so large the last couple of years, okay? So before I move on, just so everybody understands, you know, this whole concept of this cost-based contract, they have billed on estimate, and then you get true-up the actual, actual plan. Think of this, if, if any of you are Duke Energy Progress customers, think of this true-up as the fuel adjustment that we see. I'm a Duke Energy Progress customer, and on my bill, I have a fuel adjustment clause that is a true-up. That's the true-up that Duke passes on to its retail customers. This is the difference between what they thought their costs were going to be and what they actually were. That's their fuel adjustment, is their true-up.
Roy, when did, how could we have made, or how could y'all have made a four hundred and thirty million dollar mistake?
So, it wasn't us, it wasn't Eastern Agency, it was Duke. So Duke takes a projection of all of their loads that they're going to serve, including their loads, all these wholesale customers I talked about. Then they look at their fuel cost. They've got fuels that's been hedged, and they got fuel that hasn't been hedged. And they come up with an estimate of what they think those actual costs are going to be for the upcoming year, and then that's what they bill everybody on. So these same fuel cost estimates that we were billed on, the co-ops were billed on, uh, Fayetteville was billed on. So these are Duke's estimates that they're coming up with, that they're billing their wholesale customers on. Does that answer your question?
So somewhat.
Okay, so let's go to the next slide. I think I might get to, the next slide, I think's going to answer the question of, how come they're so big? Okay?
Which is your name, slide, uh, slide four?
Okay.
Yeah, I need to tell you when I move to another slide. I apologize. All right, so let's talk about the two big true-ups. So you, you all recall, December of 2022, it was right around Christmas. We had that jet stream that pushed Wade out into South Carolina. They called it Miners' Storm Elliott. And as a result of, of those events that occurred over those three or four days in December, that extreme cold weather, that's when we incurred that first fifty-three million dollar true-up, because cost in the whole southeast region went up to like, and I'm using an example here, it was over a thousand dollars a megawatt hour to buy power to deliver residents in North Carolina, and normally that power's in the thirty-dollar range. So, it was so extreme cold, gas prices went through the roof. We had a lot of gas plants that didn't run because it couldn't get gas. So that first true-up in December of 2022 was driven by that event over that Christmas holiday. So that was the first one. And that resulted in Eastern Agency share of that was fifty-three million dollars. Duke's retail customer share of that is about five hundred and thirty million dollars, or about ten percent of their load. So, Duke's retail customers, my fuel adjustment clause, my part, Duke Energy Progress customers, your, our share of that would have been about five hundred and thirty million dollars. It would have been that true-up. So that was the first one. So does that answer your question on the first one? And I'm going to move on to the second. So the next one occurred in January of 2023. So, when we had extreme cold weather, Duke was trying to, to make sure that we didn't have issues, that we're going to carry over into January, because it was right, right at Christmas, right at the end of the year. And so they purchased power to make sure that we weren't going to have problems, we're going to go all the way into January. So they purchased power, and after, after they bought the power and had it delivered to North Carolina to serve load, natural gas prices came way down. And so the power that they had bought was up at five, six-dollar gas, and then gas came down to about two dollars and fifty cents, but they had to pay for it because they had committed to purchase that power. So once again, that drove the 2023 true-up, is that forty million. So these two big true-ups occurred over a very short period of time, at the end of 2022 and the beginning of 2023.
Do you ever feel like their true-ups are just to cover their ass?
No, sir, no, I don't.
How about all the, um, I mean, it sounds like a true-up, you know, when they had all the, um, the, the coal residue that, uh, oh, we're not going to pass this on to our customers. It was passed on. It seems like every year, every single year, we end up getting some kind of true-up, as you call it. But I, I, it's getting tough when we have, we were told, and maybe it was wrong, we were told a couple of years ago that there was going to be a big lump sum that was going to come to, to help Benson with their power. And then, all of a sudden, it was not, uh, it was not there. We had to start paying more. Now, what, back in July, we had a ten thousand dollar a month increase that we have to pick up. Now, when is it? October the first, we had another nine thousand dollar a month. Okay, we're looking at twenty thousand dollars a month that we've got to pass on to, to customers. And it's just like you said, about being hard on you. But I would really like to know who sits on the, the KEMPa board? And if they are Electric City customers? You are a Duke customer. You're in Raleigh. I'm just wondering, every board member that sits on that board, she is not Electric City's member.
Right.
I'm just wondering how many, and, and I know how she votes.
Right.
And she voted because she knew that she couldn't vote to pass this on anymore, but what, two out of how many votes?
Right, thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So thirty other people voted to, to do this. What if thirty people came up and voted, hey, we're not going to do this because it's affecting air cost of living too much? It would, it would still happen?
Well, a couple of things. Uh, if the agency did not collect the revenues, then they would be in default, being able to pay the bonds, and the, the thirty-two communities would be in default of, of the power supply contracts. So there would be, let, let me back up and say, the thirty-two communities, at the out, at the height of the outstanding debt for Eastern Agency, the thirty-two communities, it was over three billion dollars. And those thirty-two communities stepped up and did what they had to do to pay that debt for forty years. So, here we have an issue here with true-ups of estimated cost versus what the actual cost was. And they are big numbers, yes, they are, they are surprises, yes, they are. But we, we, we committed contracts, we, as a group, as thirty-two communities, to enter into this contract to buy power from Duke. So, we would be in default of the contract.
Just for my own information, did Duke lose money?
Pardon?
Did Duke lose money?
No. So it, once again, it's a cost-based contract. So, actual cost are what we get billed, plus their return.
What we're saying is that their return is sick. So if they don't make their return, they charge sick.
Well, so there's, there are two components to our power bill. There's a, a capacity component, and that's where they build assets and earn a return. This piece over here, this fuel component piece, which was the driver of these two true-ups, it's a fuel cost, and so it's an actual cost with no markup, no, no return on yet.
Okay.
So in, in 2024, we've had two true-ups, and December of 2024, we're going to have another one?
Yeah, so the, the way, the way this year is running, it's looking like we're going to have another true-up for 2024 that will need, need to be paid in '25. Now, at the agency level, let's go to the next, well, first of all, I want to say this before I go on to the next slide, because this is an important part of this conversation. So Eastern Agency share of the, of the true-up in 2022 was fifty-three million, and for the '23 true-up, it's forty million. So in Eastern North Carolina, the local co-ops, they have fourteen communities that are buying power from Duke as wholesale versus thirty-two. But their true-ups are the same, fifty-three million and forty million. Now, I know that there's some thinking that some of the local co-ops have raised in true-ups that are a whole lot less than Benson and the other thirty-one communities. Well, those fourteen co-ops, true-up was fifty-three million and forty million also, are spread across fourteen cooperatives.
But when we've got, when we're sharing power, Electric City's is sharing power with South River, that's our co-op, that I can throw a rock from here and be in South River on some of their transmission lines. And people come and say, look, Will, I, I've got this in town, and I live at South, look at the difference in the view, and I say, crap, man. I, I, I don't, I, I don't know how it works, but if South River came in to Benson and say, look, we'll buy your transmissions, we'll buy everything, and we'll run Benson like South River, and y'all can keep whatever, could that happen?
No, sir.
Okay.
Now, I also want to say this, and I had this data pulled as well. So, when we look at the information that's filed with what's called the, uh, the EIA, it's, it's, it's information that's got to be filed with the federal government every year, and we have to file it, public power communities like Benson, the co-ops have to file it, the IOUs have to file it. And so I had them go pull South River's information, and I compared it to Benson's. And so if we take a customer, and if they use a thousand kilowatt hours in a month, their bill from South River would be a hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. That same thousand kilowatt hour customer in Benson's would be a hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. So, a hundred and forty-nine, eighty-seven versus a hundred and forty-five, sixty-three. So Kim, you may want to take this information and go check your rates against South River's rates, because this information tells me y'all's is lower than South River's. It also tells me y'all's share of the true-up on slide four. Five, excuse me, let's go to slide five. Y'all's share of these two true-ups is point two-six million, or two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for 2022 and two-hundred, or two-hundred-and-twenty thousand for 2023. South River's share of that true-up is going to be four-point-two million and three-point-two million. So, y'all do some fact-checking on me, right? Keep me honest here, but the information I see and I says, y'all's residential rates are lower than South River's, and y'all's true-up is going to be a whole lot less than South River's true-up.
Well, say we get another true-up in December, and say it's another ten thousand dollars a month. Okay, thirty thousand dollars a month times twelve. Right now, it'd be twelve. I don't know when the next true-up will come, but, and I've got to, not only, I've got a business that's on Electric Cities, I've got a home, a house that's on Electric Cities, but I've got to tell everybody else that are barely making it, that comes to air meetings and say, I can't pay this. I can't pay the water bill, I can't pay the electric bill. I, I mean, we can have all the classes we want on using the right kind of light bulbs and whatever, but that's not the big picture. That doesn't, that doesn't do it. I had, had gone to too many houses during the wintertime, and we've got some of these little ladies that are heating with their oven doors down, said, look, that's the worst thing you could do. But, that's the worst thing you can do, but we're still going to have to come up with another thirty thousand dollars this month that you're going to have to, to pay. I, I'm just looking, looking for, because we get hit with it. I know y'all get hit with it big, but we get hit with it, and we know these people. You don't know everybody that, that calls y'all and says, hey, we need to do something different, or, or Duke, seems like Duke, to me, always, they request a twenty percent increase so they could get a ten percent, and some way they get it. So that is just part of our true-up that, that we have to pay them. When will we be out from under the true-up and start again in July of 2025?
So, well, the debt will be paid off in 2025.
Okay.
The, 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 the contract to buy the power from Duke is not over till 2035.
And then what?
Ten, ten more years. Ten more years.
If we're here in ten years, then what?
Well, then, the, the thirty-two communities can make a decision whether they want to continue to buy power from Duke or buy power from someone else. They've got options to do what they want to do at that time.
But it seems like all our co-ops, they're having to buy their power from Duke.
That's why I'm telling you, if they're under the same contract that the thirty-two communities in Eastern Agency are under, it's the same contract.
Well, I see all these high figures, but I also have seen some, uh, some checks from some of them, that these co-ops are, are paying them dividends.
I, I understand, I know. I, I, I can't, I don't have, I don't know how to make that math work.
So July of 2025, though, that we're paid off?
Debt.
In the debt.
Yes, so.
Nobody, nobody's going to, from Duke's going to send us, or from Electric City's going to send the town of Benson any, uh, dividends.
No, sir, it's, the thirty-two communities set the rates.
It's like, once the tax, always the tax.
Yes. So let, let's look at the next couple of slides. I think it's going to answer some of, kind of, the question you're alluding to here. So for Eastern Agency, at, at the wholesale Eastern Agency level, with that 2022 true-up, Eastern Agency had enough working capital to pay for that. So they paid for that true-up out of working capital. The next true-up that we received, we didn't have, we don't have the money. And so we're paying Duke back over twelve months. For the thirty-two communities, what we decided to do was, let's, let's, there, that, the rider that the agency has to pass on this true-up to the thirty-two communities, it was originally set up to go over twelve months. We said, let's spread that out over twenty-four months. So, the Eastern Agency paid Duke in, for the 2022 true-up. They're paying Duke back over twelve months for the 2023 true-up, and they are recovering from the thirty-two communities for the 2022 true-up. It started in April, as you just said, over a two-year period. And then the 2023 true-up started October first, just last month, and it's going to also be spread over twenty-four months. So at the agency level, all thirty-two communities are doing what they can and using the agency to be somewhat of a buffer to help do what it can do with the thirty-two communities. So as Kim's sitting on that board, that, everybody's having conversations about, how do we minimize the impact on the thirty-two communities? The, the money's got to be replenished into the agency's working capital, or the agency will go bankrupt. So, but how do we do it and spread it over a longer period of time to try to minimize as much as we can the impact on the thirty-two towns? So that's what's on slide six. Now, let's go to slide seven, and it's going to show you how all this fits together, and then when I get to slide eight, it's going to be actual numbers of what this, this slide seven's showing you graphically. So the green big bar up there is the wholesale full requirements rate. So we're right at about seven, six and a half, seven cents wholesale, is what the thirty-two communities are paying for their power. We got that yellow line that ends on July of next year, and this is set up for y'all's fiscal year. So we set this up for y'all. So when you look at it as your budgeting, that's how this table was set up. So you can see that yellow line goes away, that's when the debt rolls off in July of next year. That dark blue line, it started back in April of this year, and then it's going to run out through the end of March of 2026. That's, that's recovering that first true-up over two years. Then you can see the light blue line starts in October and goes for two years. Well, that's the second true-up. So this is showing you how it's hitting and impacting y'all's budgets, as y'all are trying to plan and prepare budgets and issues that you're dealing with with rates. So the next slide is probably the money slide, because it shows you the actual dollar. So once again, this is y'all's fiscal year 2024, which was July, June, twenty-four through June, twenty-five. You can see y'all's share of rider eight is three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars. Rider two, rider one dash twenty-two, y'all's budget impact for twenty-four, twenty-five is a hundred and thirty thousand. And then you can see for October, November, December through June of next year, it's eighty-three. So for the total, for that fiscal year, it's five-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars of impact. Then you can see, when you start doing your twenty-five, twenty-six budget next year, it's going to drop down to two-hundred-and-seven thousand. And then, in twenty, when you're doing your twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, it'll be twenty-eight thousand. So, we have tried to set this up so that we have spread this out over as many of y'all's budgets as we can to try to help y'all, because we do know it, it is a tremendous impact and a burden on y'all's communities. And as Kim and the other thirty-one commissioners, commissioners sat there and looked at what we were having to do, and, and come up with the best plan that they could to keep the agency where it was able to continue to conduct business, but also minimize the impact on the thirty-two communities. There's a lot of information here, I know, and I apologize for that, but just, it's, it, this is a complicated issue that, that we've all had to, to try and get our head around and work through.
Well, I don't know how you can sit down, Kim, or anybody else, how we can sit down and do a budget. Any department head that sends anything in, I mean, we'd have to be like the federal government and just say, well, we're going to estimate your taxes because we're going to estimate what they're going to do to us, uh, in two months from now, or the next time they have a true-up. And you know, you, you can't do that, you can't make it. And we're dealing with the same thing with all our utilities. Uh, air infrastructure has, has got to, to be done, and we've just had a hit with, with our electrical department. It's the same way, we're trying to stay on top of poles and, and transformers, and then, hey, you can't get them because Duke's already bought them all up, and they've got to go to Florida and work on this hurricane. Oh, a hurricane? Well, we could jump air prices again. It, it's just like, too cold during December, well, it's too hot during July. Last year was the hottest year that we have ever had. So, we're going to have a true-up from, from all of that. You can come up with all kinds of excuses that, that it, it just keeps on and on, and we're not like Greenville, and we're not like Fayetteville, and these bigger Electric City communities, uh, I, I don't understand how Selma, I don't understand how Benson and some of the law, the, the smaller communities in Electric Cities are, are going to handle this. I mean, our budget is very tight, and we are... I mean, our budget is very tight and we are, we're running as tight a ship as we possibly can. But the employees of the town, it doesn't, well, you can't get a 3% raise. We're going to have to keep it at two because we've got to pay, um, $200,000 to Electric Cities or Duke for a true up.
Speaking of the complicated nature of it.
Yes, sir.
Maybe everybody else understands this, but I'm, I'm a little foggy on when, when the summer comes and the debt's paid. We got a reduction?
So, yeah, so when you look at, at this table on eight, page eight. So y'all's share of the debt service payment is $332,000. So when you look over here at the 25, 26 fiscal year, it's, it goes to zero. So the revenues that the agency's having to collect, pay the debt, y'all, we don't have to collect those anymore. So those revenues will no longer be collected from the 32 communities.
Rate go down.
The, this is a rider. This is not a rate. Yeah, the rider would go away.
Twenty, it's $25,000, I think. Hold on, I can look.
But it comes out of lead.
Right, yeah. Hold on, I know I've. Ready to go. 27, 70254.
Yeah, monthly?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, the, that, that rider, that debt service rider is just going to go away. And so the money that the agency needs to collect in 32 communities goes away as well. Yeah, so that rider just goes away.
But when the rider goes away, what else do we have to pick up?
Well, so.
July the 25th or July of 2025?
Right.
You can potentially pick up another true up. I mean, because you've got 24 that you'll have to do.
So here's what, so assuming that we are going to be faced with a 2024 true up.
Okay.
In 2025. My, my thought is, and we got to look at the financials to see, but my thought is that that true up would not start till this, this 2022 true up is gone. So in other words.
So we're dealing with right now, this 30,000 that we may end up pa, or 20,000 right now. This is 2022, 2023?
Yes.
We're not even into 2024 yet.
No, sir. We won't know about it till next year.
Well, say we have a real cold winter and a real hot summer and they come back to us and say, okay, instead of $10,000 or $20,000, it's going to, the true up, the true true up's going to be $100,000 to y'all. Okay, in 2024, 2023, 2024. Now, how are we going to pass that on?
Yep. And that's, that's, well, their true ups are in calendar years. So we already know, this, we already got, we already got the summer of '24 under our belts. We already know what that looks like. It's just what's going to happen in the next two months of this year. But what we know right now, based on this year, is we're going to have a true up next year for this year. That, is it, is it going to go, continue to build and go up because of, of November, December? We don't know, but we, we know based on what we have seen, it's already occurred in '24 there. It's going to be a true up in 2025. And we'll pay it, what, pay it in 2026.
When did the true up start?
Sir?
When was the first?
2015.
When was the first true up?
Right.
Yes, sir. 2022.
Oh.
I don't remember 2015.
Wait, 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 wait. Well, no, no, I apologize. Yeah, the very, very first true up was in 2016 for 2015.
Right.
We were under that contract.
But Electric Cities has captured it in their capital, like we.
Yeah.
What we call it is suspend the rider.
What I was getting at is, uh, it is within the realm of possibility that, what, let's say instead of a hot summer and cold winter, we have a hot winter and a cold summer, that we could get a negative true up, right?
Well, yes, and, and so.
Is that ever happened, I guess?
Yes, yes, it has. So from 2016 through 2021, the true ups have been between a million or two million a year. And some years Duke pays us and some years we pay Duke. Most years they pay us, but it's been a smaller number. So from 2016 through 2021, true ups have been, there have been true ups all along, every year. But they've been a whole lot smaller than these last, this 22 and 23 true ups, yes. Yeah. And in some, it's what Kim was just saying is the agency, a lot of times, has had enough working capital that they just paid Duke, paid the true up and the 32 communities, it, the rider was suspended. We didn't even pass that on to the 32. But once again, that was all 32 communities working together, looking at the impact and saying, we, we're going to let the agency pay this and we are not going to pass this on to our 32 communities.
So tell me again, one more, I'll quit asking questions. What was the reason it was 400,000, 400 million? Why, why were they so far off the two times?
Yeah, so that real, real cold snap we had in December of 2022, right around Christmas, when we had, actually Duke had rolling blackouts. Our 32 communities' power was not interrupted, but Duke's customers were. So we had that real cold snap and around December, Christmas of 2022. And then in January, Duke had purchased some power to make sure we weren't going to have that carryover into January. And natural gas prices came way down, but Duke had already committed to buy the power.
So they bought it for five, had to sell it for two.
Say that again.
I recall he said it went down to $2. So they bought it for five, had to sell it for two.
Yeah, they bought it when gas was $6 and then gas went down to $2 in January. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a little flabbergasted by that, that a cold area in December cost us $500 million. Yeah, it's been cold December.
That's right, but are we talking about North Carolina or are we talking about all of Duke's customers?
We're talking about the whole southeast and all of Duke's customers.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we didn't freeze that, that winter, but some of the other, some of the other cities did, uh.
Yeah.
It, it's not based on just North Carolina, just their 36 customers that do business with.
No.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, it was.
That was.
Yeah.
And there's no likelihood that an agency would even pick those fees up again, is it?
We, well, no, because our, at the agency level, the working capital is getting, it's drawn down almost where at the agency level, they got, you know, enough cash in trauma to pay bills and stuff, but it is down at the, at the minimum target level now. Yeah. Now, we got other factors that's driving up costs too, guys. I don't want to, this is not, it's not just the incidents that occurred in December or January of 2022, 2023. We've got supply chain issue, as you was talking about, is driving up costs. We've got a lot of load that's coming and moving into North Carolina that's driving up costs. And then we've got the carbon plan of which the Utility Commission just issued their order a Friday a week ago on Duke's whole plan to start changing out their generation fleet to a cleaner portfolio. It's driving up costs. And we're going to be talking about that in more detail next week. Because we got the order now and we can start and try to get our head around all the numbers. And what's that mean to our 32 communities buying wholesale power from Duke? Because if they retire their coal units, we buy power from them at wholesale. Well, it's going to impact our 32 communities and our costs as well. So we are, we are in a tremendous period of time here where we're seeing cost increases coming at us from every direction.
Well, across, across the board, all food, everything is, is just sky high. Utilities have always been to me, sky high and they just keep getting by with it. And we're going to, you don't think, uh, the western North Carolina uses Duke Power and all those poles and all those transmission systems, everything's completely down. Uh, and that's not going to cost Benson? I don't know, won't they use, won't they use, uh, that hurricane just like they used, uh, the winter storms?
Yeah, so, so there's three, there's three major components to the bills, right? There's the generation of which we buy the generation at wholesale from Duke. There's Duke's transmission and we use Duke's transmission to move the power from the generation to our 32 communities. So we pay our share of using Duke's transmission and then Duke's distribution. We don't pay none of that. We don't pay any of that on Duke Energy Progress or Duke Energy Carolina's. That's, that's on them. They pay that just like you all have your own distribution system. And you pay for your distribution system, Duke pays for theirs. But I thought where you was heading with this is there's also talk about this Duke Energy Carolina, Duke Energy Progress, you know, merging all of their rates into one set of rates. But then all their generation together. When that occurs, we think the east, eastern part of the state's generation cost is going to go down because Duke Energy Carolina's generation cost is lower than Duke Energy Progress's. So when they merge all that together, we expect Duke Energy Progress's to see some cost relief on the generation side.
But it hasn't yet.
Not yet. And that ain't going to occur until January of 2027. That's the target date for that.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
This is a kind of a weird one. You know, I asked you this about five, 10 years ago. We recently, they came and tried to do solar and tried to sell solar and dry house. And the house is bigger than normal, but it was 110,000 a few years ago. Recently it was 30,000, we're way down. So my question is, as, as solar becomes more efficient, more.
I kind of moved closer to you here. I apologize.
As solar becomes more efficient and more accessible for everybody and everybody wants to do it. Let's say that it goes down again by a third and now to, to go totally, to do your own power almost 10,000.
Yeah.
What, what are you, what are you guys going to do about it? What, what, how does, how do, how do you answer it?
Yeah, so there are a couple of things. First of all, we need to get some good, solid numbers on the cost of installing solar, residential solar or even community solar. So we make sure we've got the latest numbers. Because, uh, a couple of things, the costs are higher. They do sometimes talk about solar cost in terms of watts. So you got to be careful because I got a light bulb, it's a 60-watt light bulb in one land. And so when they start talking about the cost of solar, they're talking about it in watts. You got to get that in kilowatts to really come to a comparison of solar to other alternative generation sources. So, uh, that's one thing, which is make sure that when we're looking at solar cost, we're looking at it on an apples to apples comparison. For the 32 communities, i- if a customer or a business wants to install solar, they absolutely can do that. They can install it. If they install it and they put in more solar than they can use and they put it back on y'all's distribution system, then y'all got to have a way of metering it to know how much they're putting on your system, to know how to properly compensate them for what they're putting on your system. Because you don't want to compensate them and all of your other customers that don't have solar subsidizing that one over there. So that's where you get into all of the metering. You got to make sure you got your metering right and you got to make sure you're compensating them correctly.
So any more questions for Mr. Jones?
I want to say, uh, thank you for coming because you are, you are good at answering hard questions.
Well, I, we, and Kim and I hate sleeping breath in these numbers.
I got a quick, I'm like, if you sold a pound of your house and where you're selling power back to Duke or Benson, whoever you got, would you expect to get electric?
Well, I would think so, but.
Do you? Proof of thought.
What would I be doing?
You'd be paying.
For solar, we did net metering. So you have a meter on your solar and a meter like on your regular.
You've been getting like facilities charged and everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you get a credit, but.
It'd be a minimal charge.
Yeah, it'd be minimal. Be like a year thirty bucks. A lot of people, they sell the power back to you.
Any other questions?
You got any real suggestions on what we can do other than what you've already told us?
No, sir, I, I, I do not, uh, you know.
Like, like move?
We. I would encourage you, I would, I would, I would strongly encourage you, all of y'all, to do some research on y'all's residential rates compared to South Rivers. I will be happy to send you my graphs and my information, but take them and verify them. Because I think you're going to see that y'all's rates are lower than South Rivers. Y'all's base facility charge is lower than South Rivers. I think y'all's base facility charge is $29. South Rivers is 31.
I know, with the riders, yes, we're playing on with.
Would you mind putting that on Facebook?
I know, but I, and, and Councilor, I'm, I'm not trying to be funny at all up here.
Oh, I, I understand and I'm not either.
I know, this is, this is a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. And so we even come up and, and, uh, just like this year, uh, air budget's tight enough that we couldn't attend, we didn't send anybody to your annual convention. And I used to think we got a lot out of it. But when I did the math and it was, was going to cost us right around $3,000 a person to go up to Asheville and stay and play and listen to what's going on and registration. I would have really hated for, for five of us to have gone at $3,000 a person at the newspaper, get hold of it and that's sitting right there.
We can catch out of that guy, brother.
Yeah, I know. But, but you see, small towns are so much different than the city of Raleigh or Greenville or Fayetteville and they're all under the same, except Raleigh. They're all under what we're under. I'm just looking at something that's intelligent enough to say, hey, this is what's happening and we're doing everything we can. Are we doing everything we can?
So I, and a couple, couple more comments and then, you know, once, once we started really trying to get, well, let me just say this. With, with, with the cost projections that we were getting and the size of true up starting to get as like they were, that's when we started really digging in deeper, deeper, deeper under the hood and demanding even more information from Duke to be able to get in and be able to actually see what was going on. So from a staffing perspective, I think they are doing, they are doing what they need to do to look out for your best interest. I truly, I truly do believe they are. Coming up with the plan of how we need to recover these costs at the agency level to try and do everything we can on the impact on the 32 communities. I think we all, I think we're doing everything we can. I wish there was more we could do, but I think we have to answer your questions.
If you come up with any more answers, we'll be here.
I would, I, I, I would, I promise you, we'll try to keep the lights on for you. Hello, TLC. Thank y'all. Thank you. Any last questions before I step away?
Thank you, Roy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all take care.
You too. Are there any individuals wishing to address the board? Um, you're asked to provide your name and your address for the record. Okay, next we're going to have a presentation on the L-shaped building by Jay Murray. Okay, next we're gonna have a presentation on the L-shaped building by Jay Murray.
Uh, good evening. Kim asked me to make a short presentation of what was going on. We call it the L Building, but it's actually an advanced community development center. This is a project where we received 1.6 million dollars in state funding to redo, complete renovations on this building to move Parks and Rec up to the building here and put in a parking lot area, continue with some existing services that have been going on in this building before. This, this is a kind of an original drawing that the architect made for me. Obviously you see the interests coming in here on the left. We're changing the cover scheme for all the fascia panels that you see there and all new windows across the, all the way around the entire building with new doors and just a simple schedule. Just a good one here. I kinda made up a timeline how we're running things right now. Ripping out the bids, I had a pre-bid bidding with three rookie contractors today that showed interest in providing work services on our buildings, so it's happy to see that. HBC bid package is out the fifth. I'm meeting with the HBC contractors tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM to review their scope and contract. We will run both of these projects internally ourselves to save ourselves a little bit of money. And joint contracting bids, it says they're out in November, they are out and I have a pre-bid schedule for that for next Monday. And the joint contracting package is gonna be mainly the interior of the building. We're putting a completely new roof on the building, new fascia, new asphalt panels, new HBC units on the roof, new exhaust fans, we're gonna rework some of the interior duct work inside to maybe cause we have some offices at Parks and Rec that's wanting to do it. But then, we're technically, we're gonna start, I believe they got the Christmas closet in the seventeenth, sixteenth and so I told them we could probably start on the eighteenth, which should probably be a little quicker, I expect us, sorry, we're full and earnest, first part of next year. Uh, depletion, I hope, and fingers crossed, September of next year, which should be done with every one of them. And what I'm doing here is I made a bullet point list, which you're not gonna see. Help me out here.
Don't get out.
I hate computers. This is the work we're gonna be doing completely. We got, like I mentioned, we got a new roof. Oh, yeah. I did on the roof.
Yeah.
Well, we got a new roof, fascia, soft, new HBC, exhaust fans, all that too. All new windows, we're gonna extrude them on them, we're gonna match the soft ones, the fascia panels all the way around, we're gonna get rid of all the old ones. These will be non-opening, so I'll pay for security. We have two restaurants inside the building, one of them I have to make larger. It's a two stall, one's on the very northern part of the building, brought to the removal wall a little bit and remodel the other bathrooms, make them all ADA compliant. New paint, obviously, floors, we're either gonna be epoxy or we're gonna be carpeted according to room schedule, we have the schedule on the rooms that lists all the work that's gonna be happening in each one of them. Parks and Rec, we've got some new rooms for all their activities, a number of them actually. Uh, two new offices, we've got two rooms that are on turn to offices with different locations for them. We've got a shower, walk-in bathroom, we've got a big break room scheduled for them, very into the building. And there's a front office that we're gonna put in a pass-through window for people to come in and, you know, pay for their sporting events and what have you, Chris will work out of it. New lighting fixtures, new ceiling tiles, we're gonna put in new doors and hardware. We're gonna consider as an option, put an outdoor storage building. Parks and Rec right now currently stores all of lawn mowing equipment for the ball fields and all the gas cans inside the building. Now, if we had the building occupied, we're not gonna be able to do that anymore. So I'm gonna put in an option, put a new storage building and we're putting in a wall that's gonna walk off between Parks and Rec and the remainder of the building because they work some time at night and they don't want people down here wandering into their offices when they're not actually inside the building. And last one, I'll leave money available, we're gonna be putting in some department spaces for us. It'll be outside, behind the building, in the gymnasium. So that is our schedule right now. If you wish to see a set of drawings, I have a CD of drawings, I'll see if you can download link, you can look at them. I didn't want to get too much involved in this because it's like thirty-five page of drawings. So if you have any questions, we'll, we'll have to answer them later for them.
Jay, did you ever, this is the, this is what it's to look like?
Yes, sir.
Did y'all ever look at doing away with that flat roof and, and, and putting a metal like most of the schools are doing now?
I'd looked at that, but with the monies available right now, the, the plenary estimate I have just to replace the roof as it is is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, for me to come in and put a metal roof over top of it, I'd have to fix that roof anyway. Then I'd have to get in a licensable engineer, a structural engineer and engineer, all the structural members to make sure all the walls and everything will be able to support the roof system.
I talked to Ricky today and, um, as he was at that meeting, he said with all the drains that are in the top of that roof, we should not have any issues with it just going back the way it was. You, you and I had talked about, I, I had asked him to look into it, but he said it's got enough drainage in there that it, we shouldn't see any issues with the way it is now.
Is it a true flat roof like the school?
Yes. And we're tearing it all down and what we're replacing it back up, it wasn't done properly. I will say there is some pounding on it, but when it does rain hard, it, the roof, roof does drain. But we do have some areas, low areas where ponds now, and this, this existing roof has two roofs. The original roof on the building was a built-up roof and then they went over top of that with this insulation system and put it on now.
So the fire station has got two roofs on it?
It could very well, they got rolled asphalt roof on it.
It was built, it was built the very same time-
Right.
Where air offices are and air meeting rooms.
So the fire station probably has the original roof on it and this, the elementary store, somebody went over with an insulation taper, but it didn't taper it correctly to the roof frame and it's new for system.
Well, I, I think it's great that we got the money to do it. I, I just, I'm not a big supporter of any flat roofs on anything anymore and I have no idea what a, a A4A metal roof like the school systems are doing now on new construction. I have no idea what it would, would run. People couldn't believe that, that what we were, they said, so y'all are gonna gut one, 1.6 million, y'all can gut that whole school and do all of this brand new. Said, no, uh-uh, that money doesn't go that far.
Not anymore.
Yeah, I, I, I hate it.
Well, you, like I said, you're looking at probably five, five fifty, five hundred and fifty thousand for the roof, you're gonna be looking at three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand for your HVAC system.
Well, only other thing that I'm, I'm all for it, I don't wanna keep acting like I'm ass about everything, but what are we gonna do on the drainage?
The drainage?
The fluid.
On the, that would be on the far side?
That's on the front side, on the fire department front side.
That is being addressed in the stormwater design work we're only doing right now.
Okay.
And that's the design we're using for a, that's a dream. Right now, four hundred thousand dollars under contract with the company is doing that in the design order right now. We should have that in our hands completely by June next year. We'll have bid ready projects, it'll be, I'm gonna say four million.
But we will have a new building in place and a storm between then and when we get stormwater worries, everything coming together?
Water doesn't get into that building, it just floods in the front, the parking lot, correct?
Do what?
No, I've pictures I saw, I think it might have been-
No, I've got pictures with me.
Yeah?
Yeah. And Kim's got all the pictures that we have taken every time we've had anything going on because we'll take them and we'll send them to her so we can apply that to grant money.
Right. But does it, I mean, and I've seen them, but does it actually go in the door?
Yes.
Okay.
They had, they had water damage. Matter of fact, we sandbagged the doors, what storm, Alan? That we had water and the, the guys came in and they were practicing out there from Ohio.
Matthew? Matthew? Look, to answer your question now, uh, if we get the design complete by June next year, I wouldn't expect construction to be start and to alleviate those issues for at least another year after that.
Oh, okay.
So any more questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, next Department heads. Anything from Parks and Recreation?
Does anybody have any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Department heads? Okay, now we are gonna go into a public hearing and to consider approval of revocation of SUP dash two oh two three dash zero five, Paul Embler.
Uh, thank you. I, I think this, I need to do a little explanation on the front end of this because this is not a, a very normal procedure. And some people would call me, I'm old as dirt and I've never done one of these in my whole career of revoking an SUP, a special use permit. But let me do a little bit of explanation on the front end of it. A special use permit, once it's granted by the commissioners, a stopwatch starts and it runs for a total of twenty-four months. And at the end of that time, uh, then it can be renewed or extended, but there are some extra, uh, special circumstances associated with this project. There were three separate pieces of land that went under one, uh, special use permit. Two of those pieces of land have drainage issues, which the town has written a grant for, is in the process of designing the storm drainage improvements and there's a time lag in that. And what happened, this was granted well over a year ago, uh, the special use permit, but the grant's still in process and the money's not gonna be available to the new storm drainage improvements until, um, about another twenty-four months until we get it to completion. So what happens is that means that two of the three tracts of land could have nothing to do on the project, but it was awarded as one project. So what the, the owner of the property and the developers proposing to do is to rescind the entire first granting of the special use permit by council and then he will be coming back with one parcel, one that does not have any stormwater issues with it and you will receive that next month. But that's just a little bit of the history behind it. Is that an adequate explanation?
I couldn't say it any better than Mr. Namler just did.
Okay.
It is unique, but I've never done one of these laws I've been here, but that is, that is exactly why this is before you. In other words, the applicant is asking you to revoke his permit.
Okay, so the, the staff report fortunately for this is a whole lot less than what we did when you approve a special use permit. There is a letter attached to this, in your packet to the staff report, but basically I'll go over it. This is for special use permit 2024 oh three. The applicant is DCC Properties LLC and the owner is Simont Properties of North Carolina LLC. In other words, both of these LLCs are blanked, Danny who made the initial application. The total project area of all three parcels is 1.77 acres and the tax ID numbers for all those parcels are there. The current zoning is R6 and R11 residential. You're taking action on this tonight and the final action will also be tonight, this is just one thing, deal. The request is for revocation of the special use permit. The staff comments are, uh, the request for revocation of the special use permit is SUP 2023 oh five, Riddick Street Town Homes. As a result of the inability of the contractor to commence his request within the original approved period, the town admits its stormwater grant to rehabilitate and relocate the stormwater piping located on several of the subject properties has been delayed, which has delayed the project commencement. And might add, as part of the original approval on this, Mr. Danny proposed to work with the town on the easements that the town needs to put stormwater in. So he's, he's gonna be giving these easements to the town. Staff's recommendation, uh, recommends approval of the revocation to allow for the applicant opportunity to commence work on a single parcel not included in the town's stormwater relocation, which you will be receiving that in next month's agenda packet. Well, actually it'll be going to the planning board first and then it will come to you. The motion, uh, there's a motion that's there for you to either approve or deny the revocation and again, uh, Mr. Danny's letter is attached to that. With that being said, I stand up for three questions.
I'd ask that you make a motion to enter in all of Mr. Namler's submittals, the staff report, the letter from applicant, property owner into the, if you come to record. At the appropriate time, we're going to open up the hearing, that's, that's up to you, but that needs to get into the record.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open up a hearing and I want to enter into the record all of the information that Mr. Embler has presented tonight. Do I have to?
I make a motion to enter in the record everything, Mr. Embler, share. Make a motion.
All submissions, all the staff report.
All the evidence.
There you go.
All, all in favor, say aye. Those who oppose, okay.
So I don't, I don't think that applicant, property owners here, couldn't put any better than Paul. Since the applicant has asked for it and essentially telling you that he can't comply with the stormwater or with the special use permits terms and conditions, which is a legitimate foundation and reason for revocation of a special use permit and in those ballpark, that being due to the town's inability to address the stormwater issues and within the period of time that his SUP is valid for, he's sort of in a catch 22. So I think just based on Mr. Embler's information and the evidence that you have now in your record, the written staff report and in those ballpark, the, the letter that's been submitted by the property owner, um, you know, you need to go through the, through the motions or through the, through the procedure of asking anyone who wants to come, but if anybody wants to come and speak on it in favor or against and then whatever discussion you might wanna have on it as a support and then, and then vote. So that, for you, that's, I think that's what you need to do.
Okay, is there anyone that wants to come up and speak in favor of all the information that was entered tonight by Mr. Embler? Okay, then people come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Rebecca Shute and my address is 514 South Lincoln Street and these properties are all behind my house. So my question is, I don't know if there's even an answer, which property is gonna be built on and which ones aren't? And I'm in favor of it because I'm tired of looking at this land just sitting there. I'd rather something be done with it. So I'm in favor of whatever needs to happen for him to be able to move forward with building on this property.
I'm, I'm sorry, I know this is a unique situation, so it's my fault on it. Do you have, do you have a file that needs to be sworn? It's an evidentiary in the hearing. I don't think there's any, you have enough information based on what you put in the record and you're in favor of it.
I'm in favor.
Ask questions and then be heard and that's fine. Uh, if you don't, you can't really consider her testimony one way or the other, she's not sworn in an evidentiary hearing, but I don't know if that's what you're really asking for or the words in your mouth.
I'm in favor of moving the process along.
Well, the honor is-
This is gonna be actually slowing it down.
Yeah, well.
Well, you can't do anything at all if you don't stop this process- Well, you can't do anything at all if you don't stop this process, right?
Right.
So.
This is a needed step, that's for sure. The big domino that needs to fall for him to continue on and complete this stormwater addressment for some storm drain lines that are failed already in the area.
Because my yard floods all the time.
I would think it would help out, I'm a stormwater engineer, but I think it would.
And that stormwater also goes to what we spoke about with the L shade building all related across town. So the dairy plants are already working on.
And we're not holding the project up.
No, no.
No, I mean, Mr. Denny, he is going by what he knows what he needs to do. He would hate to start this thing and in 24 months have to start over because of the stormwater going through there. So, I mean, we would like to see you to have a view in your backyard too and we would like to see this happen. But it has to be, it has to be done and the owner of the property is doing what he needs to do to move forward.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Rebecca.
Did that answer your question?
As much as you can.
If you have the patience.
I've got the letter from Blake for all the upcoming stuff to continue following along with the process.
But you're in favor of it?
I'm in favor.
And contact Shannon and I think maybe do a little more questioning about timeline and everything. Or Blake can arrange.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to come and speak in opposition of the information that was entered tonight? Okay, we're going to close this portion. No one came forward. Is there any questions from the board?
It's at the bottom.
The board of commissioners make the motion to approve the request for revocation of special use permit SUP 2023-05, Riddick Street Town Homes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All that oppose? Oh, aye.
Another vote is yes, though.
Okay, next, we're under O business. This is going to be a consider approval of the revised 2025 board of commissioners meeting schedule?
Yeah, so when we all sat down and talked last month, we had a lot of discussion, not only about police salaries, but we talked about board meetings and work sessions and how that was going to play forward in 2025. So although y'all had approved the schedules, I'm bringing to you a revision. This will call for a work session the second Tuesday of every month and the actual meat of the meeting will be the third Thursday. Now, there are a couple of changes in there because the second Tuesday and the third Thursday fell in the same week, so I just backed it up a week. But this will be the meeting schedules moving forward if everybody is still in agreement to those changes. So we'll have a work session, we'll discuss, we'll have a lot of discussion with department heads and things. And then hopefully you can put stuff on consent for the actual business meeting. We have the planning board or the planning hearing and then public comments. And so it should speed the meetings up just a week.
Yeah, now let me ask you this, is this every month?
Yes, ma'am, it would be every month.
And that third meeting is eliminating the fourth Thursday, right?
So you would only have two, right? So it would just be the work session and a business meeting.
Right.
So you would only have two, but it would be every month.
Okay.
What happened to that? Did we not?
Well, we did, and y'all will have to approve this, but we talked about that and it seemed like it went, you know, we discussed that with everybody in the meetings too. And that seemed to go over because we miss a lot of, some of our discussions sometimes or we're having to carry it forward to the next meeting. We can keep it the way it is if y'all want to or we can change it, but I said I'd bring it forward, so.
Does anyone have any questions about the meeting?
Well, that's going to give the planning board a little more time to get us the information and give us a little more time to get the information so we could review it.
Yeah.
And if you ever cut it back, if you ever cut it back, it's just like tonight, Williams out. You get one other person out and you don't have a form to do anything.
Right.
So I think it's important to have the two meetings once a month. I don't need any more 12 or 1 o'clock in the morning meetings.
This will allow us to give the planning board more time. Otherwise, I'm going to have to move the planning board meetings. Because right now they have, they meet the first Tuesday and they have to have a packet to Angie by Friday. And that's just not enough turnaround for them. So this is another way to kind of help that because they've got, they've got two weeks. You guys are getting the actual agenda ahead of schedule. You can discuss it, you go into the meeting kind of feeling good about what's on the agenda.
A meeting is saying the same, right? Second Tuesday and third Thursday? Or we're going to the third Thursday instead of fourth Thursday?
It'll start in January. With the exception of a few, I'd have to go back to the calendar, but there was like, I'd say May probably was one that I had to back it up a week for the second meeting, but the dates are all listed here.
So you need a motion on this?
I do if y'all want to approve it.
All right.
Make that motion that we approve.
All in favor, say aye. Those who oppose? Okay, next, let's see. Under new business, consider approval of the renewal of the on-call concrete contract in regard to Kim.
So staff is asking that we again renew our on-call concrete contract. They were originally approved in 2023. They have, they have four renewals and they go up to 5% each renewal. As you see on your, I just redid the bid tab for y'all, so I've just added some 2024. They increased five and he is asking to increase five again this year. So bring the total of the contract to $70,000 and a little over that, but this is only as needed. So we have an issue and what we try to do is we will get a list together so we only have to pay one mobilization fee. We get them out there one time, maybe once a quarter if needed. He does a whole bunch of things at one time to help us save all the money, but this keeps our costs the same for the year 2025 with him. So we wouldn't go up anymore with inflation, which it will stay the same.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, those who oppose? Okay, next is consider approval of the ordinance number 08-2024, amending chapter 32.08 auxiliary police force. That'll be Chief Percy.
Which one you want to hear talk? You want me to start?
Either one.
I'll start reviewing the substantive we've got from Greg here, but he contacted me, chief contacted me about a departmental change, an organizational change they need to do with the auxiliary officers. You have, and just to kind of jump to the conclusion here, but what we're putting before you is a modification to change your ordinance, your auxiliary officer ordinance, to bring that back really more to a policy that is going to be enacted or put in place by the chief of police with approval and manager as regards the participation of auxiliary officers and their minimum requirement each month. What you had existing was that they had to have eight hours a month of duty. That wasn't really working for organization again. I get Chief Percy to get into that. What you've changed it to is now the chief of police will set up a policy for a minimum availability for the auxiliary officers on the roles. And that can be then amended without having to come back and make a revision to the ordinance. In my opinion, and I'll go ahead and say this, Greg don't have to. When we started discussing how best to amend this ordinance as a minimum commitment for auxiliary officers, I made the suggestion, and I think that really is something better probably handled by a policy. I understand we need auxiliary officers, but I don't know that it needs to be in a set in stone ordinance, their minimum commitment that you'll have to constantly change as your staffing and you have officers turnover, you have a lot of people leave or that you have more enough. You know, that's something that kind of needs to change and be more fluid and flexible and not something that needs to be set in an ordinance that is more difficult to change. The board has to get involved in it. So Greg can tell you the workforce and sort of the reasoning behind that.
Yeah, basically it will facilitate easier scheduling for us because as I said, right now the ordinance states they have to, they have to work eight hours per month. With the switch over to 18 hours of availability, they have to, they provide us dates when they can work and then we can cherry pick when we need them to work. So it will make it easier for us to build our schedules if we fill them in first and then we bring in our staff around them or behind them. Because the way it is now is when the captain's making the schedule, if he's got a Thursday that he doesn't have enough coverage, he'll call. Well, I can't, I got to work in Clayton or I got to work somewhere else at my other job.
How many auxiliaries you got?
Right now we have four on staff. So it will just, it'll make scheduling for us easier. And like I said, if we just do it as a policy, an internal police department policy, then we can change it as needed. Like if, when our staffing does get back up to full staff and we don't need them as much, we might can bump that down to like 10 hours or, you know, something like that. So it's more flexible if it's an internal policy and not the ordinance. So basically this is just a housekeeping measure to bring our ordinance in line with the policy.
So this policy actually helps y'all maybe retain what officers you have now?
Yeah, it will because like I said, it'll make it easier for us to get our schedule out.
Go for it.
Any more questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve.
All in favor? Aye, those who oppose? Okay, thank you. Okay, next, town managers' report.
I had a meeting with Ricky here in the Sacramento, so I kind of wanted to get you guys up in on the building really quick and see if I can get this thing to work. I've got some before pictures and if y'all can see, this is kind of what it looked like when they started tearing back the roof. We did find out that in 2017, when we had the roof replaced, we actually did a layover. And Ricky feels pretty confident had we pulled it back in 2017, they would have seen the issues that were arising. But for whatever reason at the time, I guess the management decided to do a layover. So as you can see, I'm going to stand up here really quick. I want to stay on this. This right here was around the entire building. However, if you notice, the brick is exposed. So the TPO didn't actually go up and over the top of the roof. It stopped. So what was happening is water was actually leaking behind the TPO or whatever that was. And it was causing the brick to deteriorate. You see all that moisture just in the brick. And so it was going down into the wood and that's what caused the decay. He said he also saw maybe some termite damage that had happened, but it wasn't active. Maybe that's something that we addressed years ago. I'm not sure. I've never heard that we've ever had any issues like that, but at any rate, you can kind of see what they were dealing with. Once they got up there, I asked him because we were all ready. It had already collapsed on one side, to go ahead and look at the other side. Because you can remember from those pictures, it was already pooling. Go ahead over there, pull it up, see how bad it is. It was actually on the verge of collapsing as well. So they did go in. This is just more pictures of how bad it looked. They did go in.
Kim, you're saying on the other side, okay.
There you go. So that's what they fixed. So the right side was what originally collapsed. He went ahead and did the Johnson Street side, the left side. It was, it was, when he pulled back the roof, it was, it was like you could already see that some of those were decayed and some of them had actually fallen in too. It was just a matter of time. So what you see, the white colored wood is everything they replaced in regards to wood. Not only cost us an additional $4,000 and I said, "Do it because I don't want this issue in six months." And so he went in and did it. You can kind of see where they did. I told them to kind of shore up the attic space on that side. They replaced about 17 to 20 rotted, moist.
Point out the area where we first had it six months ago.
That's not on, that was, that's the front part of the building.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, that's, that's the gutter.
This is the most recent?
Yes.
That we found in the far back?
So this is what flooded, right? No, this is what flooded right here. This is what they replaced because this is the side of the roof. The gutter's back here, it was on the other side, it was on the front side.
Okay.
Okay.
Did it pull back the roof, though? Have they looked under it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm getting there.
Go ahead.
So you can kind of see where they did the attic space. They did shore it up, they kind of T-pulled it. I believe that will hold. He said that, yeah, you had those issues, but once you got past that, the building is solid, which is also what Shane said. So what they did, if you know this, and this is a manager decision, so y'all can slap me later, they pulled the capping off that was here all around this building and they took the TPO and they actually brought it up and over. So this right here is pretty secure. You will not knock on wood, get any flooding over here. So this is the roof complete, pretty much. So original estimate was 58,922. I did ask them to do the other side, so it ended up costing 62,922. He also gave me an estimate to go around the rest of the building. So it's that part, the I part and the part over the courthouse and pull the capping off and go ahead and TPO it up and around. And that estimate was 24,447.
Now, is that the area that third floor where they were storing all their theater stuff that?
It's the remainder of the building, it's the rest of the building.
Is that where we were?
Yeah, so what she's saying, the little, the front, the furthest forward portion of the H, Y, whatever letter it is, was what they, no, the one that they just fixed, is what they just fixed. And where she's talking about the edges, so pretty much the way I see it, this TPO, it was the liner to a swimming pool, but they stopped the liner on the sides where the rain was still getting in under it. So what Ricky Nuskrer did, took the pool liner up and over the top and put metal caps on it. The price that she got talking to Ricky and having him look at everything was to take that metal cap and extending the pool liner all the way around the rest of the building so we don't experience that leaking on all other portions of the roof.
Now, he looked at the rest of the roof and he said that he felt like, you know, from what he could see, he went to some attic spaces. That will be a tremendous help.
Okay, look, where is the area that we looked at six months ago before this happened?
Kim can, Kim pointed it out.
On the right-hand side?
Kim can point it out, it was right up there where she was talking under the picture.
And what's been done to it, that's the 22,000, anything?
No, that's just the gutter. The gutter was fixed six months ago.
Right.
This is just taking the TPO, it's popping all the caps off because the caps were causing moisture to roll down the building. It's popping all the caps off and extending the TPO up and over like we did here or like I had on good here. And it's hair thrown in, so then you don't have any way the order can stick through the brick anymore.
Aren't the gutters on that side of the building just as old as the ones on the front side that he had to, that had collapsed?
Yes, and they would need to get replaced as well. But this is what I've got an estimate on right now.
Okay, but they have to got, they have to be replaced at some point?
They're going to have to be, yeah, yeah.
All right, I just was wondering what was left. Alright, I just was wondering what was late.
Well, that's what his recommendation is today on the rest of the roof. You've already done the front, that one part of it. He thinks you need to keep, he, we all understand that the caps are pretty, and everybody likes the caps, but they need, but they're not helping our city, they need to come off, they need to to carry that TPO over. That will eliminate any roof damage right now. And then we'll go back and assess like gutter, that's when we'll get an actual contractor that you had talked about, I haven't had, you know, but to have somebody actually come out and do a full, like, okay, what else do we need to do to shore up this building? So, but that's to get the roof finished. So I would like to know what the board wants to do with moving forward with that proposal. Because I was given a hundred thousand dollar limit, so I'm I'm breaching that very quickly. And I haven't done any interior work because I haven't.
But you got sixty-three thousand that you spent on the back, and you've got approximately twenty-two thousand that he estimated?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-four, five.
So you still have not to a hundred?
Not yet, but I just wanna make, that's, that's, I mean, it's not my threshold, but it's a large number, so before I have him come do more, I wanna make sure everybody is okay with it.
This is outside of the original scope.
This is outside of the original scope that y'all gave me a hundred thousand for.
So this is additional, this is additional?
This is what they fixed.
Right.
This was the fix. So, but yes, this twenty-four is additional, it's to do the remainder of all of town halls. So all the rest of the building that we're in plus above the courthouse.
Can be done for twenty-four?
Not the roof, just bringing the T, pulling off the caps and doing the TPO.
Okay.
Yeah, not the roof itself. The roof in and of itself is not, it's twenty seventeen, it's just, you had, you know, we had issues.
Well, I'd say if you're not going to, you might as well go back to square one and and do nothing. If you don't keep fixing the problem, then it's gonna create more problem, problems that I'm uh, you know, we're in a a budget crunch, but uh I I still say there there may be some funding that's coming in, hopefully, out there to to help preserve this. I know we can't raise taxes to rebuild this, and the cost of it's gonna be unreal to some people, but uh it it may give them something going. I think we've got to go ahead and fix whatever we can so we won't have any more damage.
Okay. Can I have a?
That's just, I make that motion.
All in favor?
That was kind of a broad motion.
Well.
You said feet, you said feet, whatever.
They still got a.
Okay, twenty-four thousand, I can go with that.
Yeah, but they're still, they're still working off the hundred thousand that we had already voted on.
But I have moved inside, but yes, I still am working on it, but.
I mean, if you came up and somebody said, okay, to finish it, it's gonna be sixty-five thousand, I would expect you to have to come back to this board and say it's gonna run a hundred and fifty thousand instead of a hundred.
But this is different than the original scope. Originally, we were just gonna do the part that collapsed. I did have him go ahead and do the other side because it had already looked like it was gonna stay very long. But this is to finish off the building.
Won't be a hundred thousand dollars to do whatever so we don't have water coming into the building?
No, it was to fix the flooding issue.
To not have water coming into the building? So that twenty-four thousand's in that scope with that hundred thousand?
Currently it is, but I still haven't gotten to the, to the inside, that's what I'm saying.
Right, a hundred thousand would just make the building watertight.
Right, right. Okay, so um so a motion for for the twenty-four thousand dollar expenditure. Let's move it.
Coming out of a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can y'all vote?
Say it again.
Okay, re- re, I I mean, the motion is out of the hundred thousand.
He's approving the additional twenty-four on the roof, which is out of scope for what we originally had discussed, but to keep it, but still within the hundreds. So if I have to come back to y'all with the bottom floor, then I will, like if I need more money. I just, I'm not, I'm not.
But you're still working with it?
I'm still working with it, I wanna make sure everybody's on the same page.
And include?
Yes.
Okay, I understand, I I.
Yeah, you're good.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, um all in favor say aye. Those who oppose, aye.
Other than that, um we are closed for Thanksgiving on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Christmas on Main is December sixth at six o'clock. And the last I told, we all wanted to still be in the Christmas parade, is everybody still on that track? Because I need to get our ride together and turn in the uh the thing for Ms. for Ms. Loretta. Is everybody still good to ride?
As long as you don't get nothing in the way.
I'm not, I, we're not. Okay, alright, so I'll, more details to come on that, other than that, that's all I have.
I would like to ask if there's any way y'all can be in the tree lighting this year, please to represent the town because it's gonna be a rough one this year.
Uh it's Loretta?
Well, we buried, uh two weeks ago, I buried my chamber port chair, and our mayor is not well, so.
Yes.
Kim, I I have one question, the lady that was up here before, have y'all made contact with her? No?
Praise. Yeah, and I sent an email late this afternoon. Ms. um Cassandra has responded, she has, we've got her stuff together. I'm gonna put it in a memo in the December meeting so y'all can approve or disapprove. For power of praise.
So have you talked with them about about what's going on?
Power of praise? We talked to her every time. And she got those figures and printout so she could take it to her board, yes. Me and Ms. Alfred are still playing phone tag. She'll call me, I'll call her back, leave a message. So if y'all wanna give her my cell phone number, y'all can. And also, um I passed this out before the meeting, all the um Christmas events that the chamber's doing for this year, so.
Alright.
So let me ask you something, and this is not a sort of, what is the rundown on the main? Can you give us an update?
Um.
Or do you know an update?
I can, um can I give it to y'all after and not in the public meeting? Just for, okay, I'll give, yeah, just stay back and I'll tell y'all.
Okay, is there any October reports?
October?
Or do you have anything else on?
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about October.
Town attorney, um report?
Alright, everybody keep saying, appreciate you praying about it, thoughts of prayers to Jerry's family.
Yeah, any reports from the board, board members?
Well, I I I have one, I um it's pertaining to 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 just a neighborhood that is just not in good shape right now. Um it is a house on Brocklin Street that is a hot mess. The people have moved out, I I, they're in the process of moving out of some. But in the meantime, the guy had put up a tent in front of the house, like. And it it is, it's disgraceful looking, and I, sucks gotta be done about.
They, it's under code enforcement, they've sent um letters. I know that I talked to several people about it that have called me in the in the last couple of months, and it is on, planning department is working on it. Mr. Paul just left, um he could give you a better update, but they they do have it on their radar. They are sending code enforcement letters.
Trash bill, trash bill going down ten dollars next month?
We haven't discussed it internally yet, so.
We are still going back and forth with Norma
With Norma.
about the amendment to the contract of services matching up and things that were on the original agreement, which were supposed to be at no-cost services, have been charged. We're we're working through some things that she uh.
So it's not cutting right from their last meeting?
I'm sorry?
It was not cutting right from their last meeting and her standing up here and said, okay, give me a year, I'm gonna make.
I'm doing it for this price.
Yeah.
Right, they are, but we're also making sure that what we're paying for is actually what we're getting, and it's, it combines with what their contract said. So we, Kayla's working on it daily, her, I, we're talking about it. I mean, we're we're all running through different things, but we'll have something for you guys in December. Does it mean, obviously, we'll have to know for January?
There were things that were supposed to be provided at no charge to the town based on the original contract, and those were brought up with the previous reps that we dealt with. Um I will to credit Norma, when I brought her that information, she has since dug into it and found that we were charged for things we shouldn't be, she's working on.
Does that mean we can give back money from them?
We're working on it.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
Send them, you know, say, hey, we'll breach contract and uh do like they did us.
Yeah, we're working through it. So yes, that that's the the short answer for as to why we don't have a firm
Okay.
figure yet, yeah.
Okay, is there anything else from any of the commissioners? And I do not have anything.
Only thing I've got is maybe from Allen of Air Fire Department. Christmas will be the first Tuesday night in December, which is the second. Y'all will be getting uh.
Third?
I think it's the third.
Is it the third? Okay, the third then. Y'all show up on the second, you won't get there.
December the third, it's on a.
Third.
I got mine in the mail today.
Oh, did you? Okay, well, you've already done it.
Is that on a Monday?
So we do not have another meeting um in November, so y'all have a great Thanksgiving. Who do you?
Second, okay. I don't have anything on behalf of the mayor. Can I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose?